Okay, it's streaming.
Mr. President, we're ready.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning to each and everyone. Glad to see everyone is in good spirits and good health. And we will turn it over now to our very capable City Club.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, March 23rd. We have approval of minutes from March 16th.
All right, great.
Great job as always. Thank you.
Appeals, we have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on April 2nd and 3rd from 1:00 PM until 6:00 PM on Pallister Place West.
All right, no problem.
October 17th, 24th, and 31st from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM in Beambles Square. Every Saturday in April and May from 2:00 to 6:00 in Cathedral Square. And every Saturday in April and May from 2:00 to 6:00 in Beambles Square.
Colleagues, I have been inundated with commentary from residents and business owners that are in close proximity to both Beambles and Cathedral Squares. And the argument is not against the intent, which is Mr. Pope wants to, as he's done all over the city, preach the gospel. He wants to spread the good news. I'm all for that. The concern has been the regularity of it and also these four-hour blocks of time. And so in deference to their concerns, I'm gonna ask that we would limit the time that Mr. Pope would have from four hours to one hour. If, you know, if we can't get the message out in that time period over those series of weeks, then come on back the next week and try again. And then you have the next week to try again. But I think it's a bit much for these four-hour time periods for eight, nine weeks at a stretch. And I have not heard this complaint. Typically, we don't hear any complaints from residents when we get something from Mr. Pope. But I have heard strongly from citizens about this particular series of requests. And so I'm going to ask that we would limit it from four hours to one hour each week so that while he'll still have a chance to go forward in his proclamation, it won't be a four-hour inundation each and every weekend.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I think you also ought to spell out which hour.
As early as possible. He's asking for from 1:00 to 5:00. So I would ask that we would go from 1:00 to 2:00.
Right.
In Beambles Square from 2:00 to 3:00. In Cathedral Square. Wherever he's made an application, if we could take that earliest hour that he's made the application and go 60 minutes would be my request.
Okay. Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. But my question is, or, you know, or statement is that even with the Cathedral Square and Beambles Square, you know, those are pretty much almost like the same dates and time. Is it wise for the secretary to reach out to Mr. Pope and discuss what hour he want at which part before we just make the decision to just hold this over for one week?
What has been indicated to me is that because their question was, how can he be at two places at one time? And so what's been indicated is that it's him and he has a team of associates that will be at both places simultaneously. And so if he wanted to start, Mr. Vice President, at 1:00, their concern is the lateness of the hour getting over into the evening when they're trying to enjoy the weekend or enjoy their evening after work. So I still would prefer taking his earliest request at time and then give them a hour and that just be where we, I mean, I don't mind checking with him, but that's pretty much where that's pretty much where the community is. And I know that's where I'm gonna probably be.
Yes, sir.
Whatever you said, I'm ready.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis?
Another location that Mr. Pope wishes to engage in his activity on Thursdays and Fridays from 5:00 to 8:00 PM is the corner of Imogen Street and Springdale Boulevard. This is a corner that Mr. Richardson and I share. The west side of that intersection is commercial, but the east side is residential. I have not heard any, Mr. Pope's been out there before. I have not heard any complaints from residents in District 5 out there. I don't know if Mr. Richardson has heard any. I'm a little concerned about going to 8:00 PM on a Thursday and Friday night. I don't know if Richardson has any opinion on that.
I think that's a little late to be out there myself. Because people be going in, they're going to bed. I mean, so I think we will get some repercussion from that.
Why don't we give him a, how about if we did the same thing? How about if we let him go out there from 5:00 to 6:00?
All right, that sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Then we have request for waiver of the noise ordinance in Cooper Riverside Park on September 11th from 4:00 to 8:30 on Broad Street on April the 4th, 10:00 AM to noon. On Dunbar Street, March 27th from 12:00 until 8:00 PM.
I don't have any objection on the last two.
Okay. Public hearing today. It's a public hearing to declare the structures at 1652 West Street, 1211 Gent Street, 815 Chin Street, 909 Antwerp Street, and 1621 Rochelle Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have Dottie Boykin. And this is regarding the Meditation Center of Alabama. She has come and sent suggestions on how the center was treated by the city council and the planning commission attorney.
Could we get an update from, and I'm kind of surprised with this, but well, never mind, never mind. That's fine. Leave it alone.
Essential COVID-19 item held over. 88019, Ordnance Deeming Property located on Wilkins Road, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorized to sell to Ashley Bailey. 40054, declaring the structure at 1551 Telox Street, a public nuisance and ordered demolished.
Mr. President, this is David Dokkenbaugh, Deputy Director, Municipal Enforcement. I have some additional information for this item if you have a chance to hear it.
Let's hear it.
Okay. The property owner has applied for a permit and has actively begun the renovations to the structure. And I do request at this point that we table it permanently, allowing him to move forward with the repairs of the structure.
Good news.
Which one was that?
40054.
Okay.
6161, Establish the Conference Station of Adjunct and Acting Municipal Court Judges.
Alex, I'd ask that we would hold this particular item up. We've appointed a committee to review not only this particular item, but also to set forth a process to fill vacancies we might have with adjunct and acting municipal court judges. We hope to have that committed date ready to announce by 10:30. So if we could have two more weeks on this item, it would be appreciated.
08184, Approved Purchase Order to Jerry Page Turf and Irrigation for Rotary Moore. 08185, Approved Purchase Order to Petroleum Traders for Diesel Fuel for various locations. 08186, Approved Purchase Order to Blue Rins for a second month tent rental for COVID back site. 13187, Authorized Change Order Number One to Contractors Jay Hunt Enterprises, General Contractors for Lad People Stadium Walking Trail. 21188, Authorized Contract.
If we could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Christensen, are you connected?
Oh, yeah, I'm standing there. I am. Go ahead.
Do you mind giving us a a general overview of where we are on this particular project? I see the change order and I'm familiar with what's being requested, I guess. And I've been out there a couple of times. Can you kind of give me an overview of where we are on this particular initiative?
The project is essentially complete. The only thing that's hanging out that took longer than anticipated was we had a slight relocation for the dog park. It would not go where we initially intended it. So we asked the contractor to give us an alternate price to do that work. That should be almost completely finished right now. This is the change orders really to clear up the project so we can go ahead and close it out.
Thank you.
Okay. 21188 and 189 are authorizing contracts with Cynthia Curry for drug lab technician services in municipal court and Connie D for payment clerk services in municipal court. 21190, Authorized One-Year Service Contract with Gorm Air Conditioning Company for HVAC maintenance and repairs at various City of Mobile facilities. 21191, Authorized Contract Amendment with Goodwin Mills and K Wood for Michael Figures Park Improvement. 21192, Authorized Contract Renewal with Neil Schaefer for Stormwater Management Professional Services through March 30th, 2022.
Hold up, Madam President. Do we have a DBE on this one? A 15% DBE?
We have a 5% DBE. And this is to perform the community outreach on this particular project. It is a renewal of this particular contract. In the past, we had had EPR, who the owner passed away suddenly a few months ago. So they have now gotten Efroman Associates to work on this contract with them.
Okay, so you're saying that you have, you do have a 15%?
We have 5%. We don't have the 15%.
I'm not, I'm not going with that myself. The problem is 15%. The contractor can't set the percentage. He can say it over 15, but the law requires 15, so.
I mean, and what we need to do is we need to have that meeting we talked about. Because really, all contracts combine, all contracts combine for the entire year. Unless they're otherwise restricted funds, have a, have an objective of 15%. And we just need to know where it is. And we need to make doggone sure that we're making the best effort. But to try to do it contract by contract is kind of like managing your stock portfolio. You'll drive yourself nuts. That's why we have Archeneek to make sure that we, there's a best effort.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
If we, if all of the contracts that we're gonna have per year would be placed on our contract, placed on our agenda one time, we can make that decision that John was talking about. We get them one at a time. We have to handle them one at a time. If we require 15% upfront, it would be 15% in the rear at the end. So I I'm for 15%. Else when it comes back up here, I'm voting no. So everybody vote the way they want to. Vote no.
Let me ask you, Ms. Kidd, on this particular project, this particular agenda item, is your office satisfied that this contract had put forth a good paid effort to reach this 15% standard?
At this point, yes, sir. They, in the beginning, and again, this is a renewal of this particular contract. They had been using EPR because that company had to dissolve because of the passing of the owner. They have been reaching out to others. They have gotten Efroman Associates. And we'll continue to work with them as far as trying to make sure that they get more where applicable.
And years passed with the prior affiliation before the owner died. Was their level of involvement at the 15% level?
It was, but that particular firm was doing also some engineering services because they were a certified engineer as well. So they were both handling some of those services as far as management as well as the public outreach.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
So, Kidd, you're saying that you don't believe there is another DBE? You don't believe that that can meet the specification that is required in the contract? You think that a 5% is, you don't have anybody else qualified to do any other portion of the contract?
No, that is not what I'm saying. We do have some others that may be available, well, that are capable of doing the work. But as far as they are available, that I'm not sure of. Again, I am and will be continuing to work with Neil Schaefer to get more participation.
Okay, I see what you have to say. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I would like to know how the city is standing with its storm water management. I haven't heard anything in over a year. I mean, are we in compliance now? Are we, you know, are we good with ADM? I mean, could we get some information about that? How are we doing?
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick Amberger, if I may respond to that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Amberger.
We're in very good standing with them. If you recall, previously, we were the, voted as the poster child of not what to do. Now we are the poster child of how a program should be ran. Ms. Sawyer and her team have done an excellent job of keeping, managing this consultant at various outreach, various departments. And I would say at this point, we're in very good standing with them. I think we're doing a good job with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, are we gonna hold this over for another week?
I recommend we hold it over for another week.
I'm saying if we hold it over, this is a very specialized kind of contract and specialized work that they continue doing. If we hold it over and keep holding it up, this work will stop. I mean, they're not going, they're not gonna work for nothing. And we've had this contract with this same company for years. And you just heard that we are now the poster child for doing what's right. Archeneek has said she will continue working to try to make sure that Neil Schaefer finds some other DBEs. So I don't think we need to let this kind of important work lie while we argue about, you know, whether they've got 15% DBE or not. They'll get it. They had it before. And, you know, this is just work that we can't let just go.
Councilman Manzi?
Yes.
This is Flo Kessler.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to follow up on Councilwoman Gregory's comment. Neil Schaefer is working with a, an engineer who is representing several municipalities on their MS4 permits and their stormwater planning. And he has done an amazing job for the city. Really helped confine the city to the requirements of the federal and state laws. And this particular time is critical right now because after delaying its review of the city's MS4 permit for several months, ADM has gotten back to the city and said that we're gonna have two weeks to review the ADM edits to the city's MS4 permit. So the timing here is actually quite critical. And it is important to renew this contract timely. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I think it's up to Neil Schaefer to tell the city that I've put forth my best effort. I couldn't find any more DBEs, 5% is all I could find. Then the council need to move on. That's not what Mr. Schaefer did. We've heard from Ms. Kidd, who say there are other DBEs out there that can make up the 15%. Now, why he came to us with 5%? Because he wants 95% of the contract. He doesn't want to give up 15%. I'm not voting on this today. I'm not voting to vote that. And I have nothing against Mr. Schaefer. I believe he's doing all the work that the city requires. I believe he's good. He's working in other municipalities, making plenty of money. Mr. Neil Schaefer's got to give some of this money to DBEs. And I'm not supporting this. Either we delay it over, I'm voting no.
I think it is a time maybe to vote it up or down and let's move on.
I ain't got nothing against.
Yeah, so let's go.
The only thing I'd say, and I certainly hear exactly what you're saying, Mr. Richardson. But I also heard the commitment from Ms. Kidd that she would be in regular consult with Neil Schaefer to help them reach the level that they need to reach. And their past practice has been to not only root it, but to exceed it. So I don't think that it's something intentional on their behalf to disregard our ordinance. And in light of what we heard from Ms. Kessler and the importance of us staying in compliance, I'd hate to hold it over. I hate to delay it any further. In particular, when she's made that commitment to us. And it's something that we'll be able to continue to verify that she'll be working with them to get to that 15% level.
Councilman Manzi?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, Neil Schaefer was kind of at a disadvantage with this because the DBE that they normally use, again, suddenly passed away. And that was just this past January, I'm sorry, November. Actually, right before Christmas, after Thanksgiving. So they were used, and we actually on several projects with that particular closing, sudden closing of that company. Because they were working on several of our projects, we had to wait to get a legal ruling as far as what was gonna happen with the company. And we did not get that until late January. So this is something that they've, all of us have had to struggle with, with the sudden closing of EPR.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President, then Mr. Richardson?
Ms. Kidd, could I ask you a question? Typically, this contract that's in front of us today, when does that usually come to the city? I mean, I understand that we have been struggling and settled. But when does this contract usually come to the city?
This particular contract? So it should be at the same time each year. I think this is the second renewal. Rosemary, if you're on here, can you?
I'm here, Archeneek. This is Nick. That's correct. After, and after this year, after this cycle of it, it'll go back out for an RFP to which firms will be solicited to present their proposals to the city and be considered for valuation for another three-year contract term.
So this usually comes to us in the month of March?
That's right, yeah. And around about this time of year is when it's coming to you, should be. And again, this is, I think somebody said it earlier, this is pretty highly specialized work. The firm whose owner passed away was a unique combination of technical skills, the engineering skills that she had, and a communication outreach firm. So she was able to do a lot of different things. And there's just not a whole lot of firms that do this type of, particular type of work. And it is a regulatory compliant. This is kind of almost in line with our inspection program that we don't need to slip. And this is just not work that needs to slip and slide. It really needs to move on.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I'm back to, I'm back to Ms. Kidd. Ms. Kidd, I want to make sure I understand what you are telling us. Are you telling us that it's a possibility that Neil Schaefer may find somebody down the road for, to bring the contract up to 15%?
That is a possibility. And again, I will continue to work with them to see if we can find someone else.
You believe that if you can find somebody, that they were, they were contracted with him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm, that's good enough for me. Let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And thank you for all of your efforts, Ms. Kidd.
21193. 21193, Authorized Contract with Bill Smith Electric for Harold L. Johnson Police Headquarters Emergency Generator Replacement. 47200, Assent to the Vacation of Right-of-Way between Lots 3 and 4, Westwood Farms 3 subdivision on Halls Mill Road. 01209, Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreement with Mobile County for the Mobile County Soccer Complex. Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time. 09020, Ordinance to Recreate and Reestablish a Police-Citizens-Community Relations Advisory Council. 88021, Ordinance Deeming Property at 2318 St. Stevens Road, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorized to sell to Lee's LLC. 03210, Reappoint Tomography to the Mobile Water and Sewer Board of Commissioners. 08211, 212, Approved Purchased Orders for Fuel for the Wade Transit and to CDW Government for Annual Microsoft Software Subscriptions, $182,205.36. 09213, Reallocate Funds from the Convention Center Fund to various Convention Center repairs, maintenance projects, $2,293,500. 21214, Authorized Contract with Sunrise Network Solutions for Security Upgrades to Various Public Works Facilities, 21215, Authorized Contract of Harris Contracting for Medal of Honor Park, Athletic Fields Concessions and Restaurant Improvements, $803,157.
Hold up, hold up. Do we have a DBE on this?
They have Davis Construction, who's a certified DBE, to perform some of the, well, to perform concrete work. And then they also have Mayor Electric, of which they will be purchasing electricals. And then they also have, uh, Mayor Electric, of which they will be purchasing electrical supplies as well as lighting, uh, material for this project.
It's all of that up to fifteen percent?
Uh, that equals up to right at a little over, uh, eleven percent.
Okay, here we go again. This is the first read, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not going with, it's almost a million dollars. So, so, um, Ms. Kidd, would you say that there are contractors that can do the fifteen percent D B E contractors?
Again, with this one, uh, they've got some restroom upgrades in it, but a lot of it is lighting. Um, so there, that's where the lighting and electrical comes in. I will have to take a look at the plans to see exactly what else, um, they will be able to find someone. They did have another one listed. However, uh, I could not find any information on them, nor were they registered with us. The other two were registered with us and already in the system.
Okay, I, I'll see where you are next week. Thank you.
Twenty-one, two, one, six, authorized agreement with Volker Inc. for staff augmentation services for miscellaneous capital projects, one hundred fifty-two thousand for initial six-month term. Twenty-one, two, one, seven, authorize a memorandum of understanding with the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources State Lands Division regarding Helenwood Park. Thirty-one, two, one, eight, authorized.
President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, it's Ms. Milton on, on the, on the, on the line?
I'm on the.
Ms. Milton, uh, you, do you see it, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, uh, good morning. Could you explain to the council, um, about this particular one item, please?
Yes, it's actually, it's a renewal. It's been in place since, uh, two thousand and four, and this, it just needs to be, um, updated and the state owns the park, but the city manages it. And originally it was a private party agreement with the Nature Conservancy, but it expired, it expired in twenty fourteen and I've been working on trying to get the state to update it since twenty eighteen. So we finally got it back from the state. They had a lot of changes and stuff. And so we just have one between the city and the state and then the Nature Conservancy will have one with the state as well for the Living Shoreline Project will be taking place out there. So that's why it was important to get it in place.
With this agreement, is the state giving any money now towards Helenwood Park or, or, or what?
Uh, no, not through this agreement. No, it's strictly just about managing. We, the city, from my understanding, is always, well, at least since two thousand and four, managed with its own resources.
Okay. And so how is the project coming along down there with the, you know, the whole ordeal? Um, with the, uh, natural resources down, you know, on South D I P. I mean, because, uh, the last that the, the council, not myself, but the council, I had heard, you know, was talking about, you know, beachfront, et cetera. Uh, could you just bring the council up to speed exactly, you know, what's going on down there?
Well, there's a few things going down there. The Perch, you guys are familiar with the NIFWIF two grant. It was the Perch Creek acquisitions. And we did complete it and closed on two of them in November of last year. But unfortunately Winston Graham passed away, so we just closed on that one last Friday because the state had to open. So those NIFWIF parcels that are Perch Creek are all closed and acquired by the city now. And they'll be under a conservation easement with the South Alabama Land Trust. So those are done. And then we're still working on the former wastewater treatment plant, which we all know as Zibek with Moss to acquire that, to cobble it together.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And if we could, on item, uh, right before that one. Twenty-one, two, one, six, Mr. Christensen, are you there?
Yes.
Can you give us an overview of that particular item?
Uh, this is to supplement the architectural engineering staff, uh, with a, some project management services that Volker will be supplying. They will be doing active project management on some of our projects, which we have not had staff to do. And, uh, the initial term is for six months, uh, with an option to extend for an additional six months if it works out.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson.
I, I want to go back to, um, twenty-one, one, fifteen to ask, um, Ms. Kidd one other question.
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Kidd, did the Harris Contracting Service Inc., did they ever come to you and ask for help for getting, um, additional D B Es to bring them up to par?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Kidd has the list, over two hundred minority contractors. So to submit a, to submit a contract to us, uh, and you're not up to par and you haven't made, you haven't even contacted Ms. Kidd to see whether or not there are additional D B Es that can help with the work. Uh, it's no need her being there. So they're just ignoring her, saying, this is what we're submitting. You move on. They're like, no, this is it. So, uh, I'm through. So next week, if they, if it's still there, I'm voting to turn the contract down.
Thirty-one, two, one, eight, authorized grant agreement in support of State Homeland Security Grant Program, one hundred and two thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Thirty-one, two, one, nine, authorized grant application to a DECA for Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant, thirty thousand, no match. Thirty-seven, two, twenty, recommend approval to the A B C Board for issuance of a special events retail license for Billy Strings on Virginia Street East Parking Lot. Forty, two, two, one, two, 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 three, two, two, four, two, two, five, or declaring structures, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight, two, two, six, assess cost for removal of weeds, group sixteen oh four. And fifty-eight, two, two, seven, authorized removal of weeds, group sixteen, twelve. Sixty, two, two, eight, approval order, special bonus to the February, uh, firefighter of the month, Glenn Merritt. Sixty, two, two, nine, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims. Uh, Mary Jackson, and then we're adding one, that's the Botanical Gardens. Um, twenty-one, two, thirty. And this is the auth, uh, authorizing the Mobile Botanical Gardens Agreement.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gregory.
If you all will allow this to be added and then if we could go ahead and vote on it today, that would be good. And this has been on the agenda before and we've laid it over several times, but, uh, both sides have signed on now. And, um, in order for the city to release the funds, um, the agreement was that they would sign, uh, that the board would sign and they have. So, um, if we could get this passed today, that would certainly, um, help out the Botanical Gardens.
All right, I'm in.
Same here, same here.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Ones I have that we're going to take up today. Zero, three, two, ten, reappointing Tommy Zogby to the OS Board. Thirty-one, two, eighteen, the grand agreement note, no match to the State Homeland Security Grant Program. The no-match grant application to a DECA. Thirty-seven, two, twenty, approval, A B C Board approval. Forty, two, twenty-one, two, twenty-two, two, twenty-three, two, twenty-four, two, twenty-five, two, twenty-six, two, twenty-seven, or declaring structures and weeds. And then twenty-one, two, thirty, the Mobile Botanical Gardens.
You don't want, we don't want to do the special bonus to the.
Yeah, we'll do the special bonus to.
Uh, any other announcements?
Uh, Mr. President, I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone had asked me about, um, reporting motorists who throw litter out their cars or trucks, whatever, and, uh, the motorist is able to get a license tag number. I know in the past, uh, the motorist who was doing the reporting could contact police department or three-one-one and give them the license tag number. And then the police department would write a letter to the person who was, um, throwing the litter out, the violator. Is that still something that's in effect? Um, because I've been asked about it. And I just want to make sure that if somebody does report somebody for tossing something out their car window and sends in the tag number, that, you know, something would actually happen. I just want to make sure before I say yes, that, um, this actually is still something that the, the police department does. I don't know if, uh, Chief Barber or Batiste or anyone is on the line and can answer that. But, um, if they could, you know, get it to us, that would be very helpful.
Yes, Ms. Gregory. This is Jim Barber. The, um, you, you are correct in that if you see anybody throwing any type of litter out of their car window, if you'll get that tag number and report it to three-one-one, three-one-one will route that to the chief's office at the police department. And a letter will be sent from the office of the chief notifying the registered owner of that vehicle of the violation uh, with a warning for future violations. And so that, that is in place. Uh, we checked on it to make sure that that system is still active and it is.
Great, very good. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I know the commentary of the members of the, of the council.
Yeah, I just want to speak on one commentary, um, that's with the, uh, litter. Um, and I forever say that, you know, we need to put out cameras, you know, especially areas that we know that is very highly where people throw out, you know, trash. Um, I have one particular area that's in my, my district now, uh, which is, uh, on the service roll of I T N, where literally there's trash all the time where people constantly just throwing stuff out the window. And I don't believe that these people going to stop, you know, doing it unless they see theirself on TV. Um, with technology today, I mean, we can put out cameras to, you know, well-known dumping sites, uh, sites that we know where people actually just throw out trash because pretty much a lot of these people are just comfortable and just doing it. And when they comfortable, it's no, you know, no stopping them. You know, sometimes you, they might receive a letter, you know, in the mail, if they check the mail. But, um, until they start seeing theirself on TV, I think this is going to continue to happen. And I've been preaching about cameras for, for years, you know, on this, on this council, you know, to placement at well-known dump sites and to, um, you know, and also catch these, uh, litter, you know, people that throw litter out the, out the cars. But, um, and, you know, and I am aware that the city have put out some cameras at some dump sites. But, I mean, what was the outcome of it? I mean, pretty much, you know, one local news station has a segment, you know, called, called in the act. And we, we need to put these citizens on TV, caught in the act, you know, until that happened. You know, they're still going to feel comfortable in doing it, but they see theirself on TV and other citizens see that the possibility that they can be put on television and embarrassed is just going to keep on happening. So again, I'm playing, you know, with the, uh, city, you know, this, you know, take for the action. Not just, you know, put up cameras, but let's expose these individuals. Because again, making our community just look bad, you know, I run for the citizen but bad on TV once or twice in versus we have hundreds of people going down I T N and throughout our neighborhood, just seeing trash, just, just throw the ball. I mean, I, I have a serious issue with that. Another issue that I do have too, um, which I'm going to, um, possibly talk to, uh, um, you know, uh, Chief of Staff later on, is that I have sessions in my, uh, neighborhood where trash is just out there. We have ordinance that it trashes on a property that the city can go and ticket that particular property owner. And I have, you know, sections in my district where trash is just laying on businesses' ground and it's just laying there. And one particular business, I don't believe they, believe they need to go out there and pick up their trash. It just constantly just standing out there. But the enforcement of that, it just, it just, it's, it's bad and everything. But I will be contacting the Chief of Staff later on about that and everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory?
If I might chime in on that, uh, if you go to any, uh, retail strip, um, the mall, anywhere, uh, any, uh, grocery store, convenience store, you look at the parking lot, there's trash. I agree with you, Mr. Small, that, uh, the owners or the, the people who are leasing these properties don't believe that picking up the trash in their parking lots is, is their responsibility. You know, not all. There are certainly some that do keep their properties clean. But, uh, for the most part, you see people just dumping their fast food or dirty diapers, you name it. You know, there's, there's trash in the parking lot. Um, also on the cameras, I've been chatting back and forth with, uh, Mr. Peavy about cameras because like you, I've got places in my district where people come and just dump illegally on vacant lots. And there are some favorite dumping spots and we know exactly where they are. And of course, every time the city comes out and cleans it up because the neighbors can't stand it. I mean, it's horrible and it spreads. So the city does come out and pick it up eventually. But the people who do the illegal dumping come right back to their favorite dumping spots and do it again. So we have to find a way to, to stop this. I've asked for costs on cameras. I don't know how we do this, if it's a citywide effort, if we have to chip in some from C I P or discretionary, however we do it. And then how we record, um, and, and keep the recording, keep the information. I just don't know how it all works. But I would say something has to give. You know, these communities come out and they do cleanup and we, we barely, you know, make a dent in what the problem is. And I think the people in the communities will eventually give up because they see that their efforts are, you know, just not, um, doing what needs to be done. They come out, they do the work and then yet, two days later, you know, it's, it's a mess again. Um, I know Colonel DeLapp has been working on a program and it is a full, uh, there are lots of variables and things that you have to do, but, you know, I, I think we're all just venting and we're frustrated and I think you can understand it. But if we can just make a dent in some of these things now, get the word out, do better enforcement, be more proactive, I, I think that will help. And, um, like you, Mr. Small, I'm, I hear it the same things and see the same problem.
Yeah, you do have people that actually have just given up. But again, it's just about the, the enforcement, you know, you know, of it. I mean, it, the tools are there, but you know, the city just needs to just enforce it. I mean, and one particular business that's in my district, I, I, you know, I mean, it's just like it's just immune. I mean, it just, and it's, it's hurting me. But I'm like, I mean, I'm not the city to go out there and just tell them, hey, you know, I'm going to ticket you, which I can't do it. But, um, it's just literally just laying out there and I know for a fact, you know, that city inspectors, you know, and the people that's able to, uh, ticket these businesses, they pass them by it. But again, you know, I'm not a minister, I'm just a legislator.
And we, and we have those same issues in, uh, various parts of District Two. Where we have even companies from out of the county that come and intentionally unload their, their undesirables uh, in this one particular community. And then the community is just, uh, under siege with all of this trash and filth and fuck that's not even native to their community. You, you cannot buy a Coca-Cola in this neighborhood, let alone a warmer. But yet, all of this trash from other places, uh, ends up there. And, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Vice President and Ms. Gregory. If some kind of a camera system, uh, you know, surely some other city has gone down this road successfully. And if implemented, I know if you run red lights in certain cities, they take pictures of your tag and send you a, a, a card ticket in the mail. And if you don't pay that ticket, it'll interrupt your license. And the reason I know it, because I got one in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, driving in a rental car. Got a ticket just as good, caught me, mailed it, caught me way down here, the sun is out. And I had to settle up on that ticket. So the technology to capture the licenses is out there. And we can capture these individuals and embarrass them to the same degree that God busted, that embarrasses them. When they go to Metro, we ought to make us a God busted. And put them right on that website and let the whole world know that, uh, that. and let the whole world know that, uh, that this is, these are the individuals coming into our communities littering. Our citizens are fed up with it. And we get these emails all the time from citizens saying that their neighbors or their visitors or their relatives are remarking just how trashy this section of, that section of the city is. That should not be the case.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
If, if I could jump on this bandwagon, I think the idea of the cameras is a, is a good idea. I, I, you know, my, my suggestion would be that, you know, if we have, if we have fifty cameras out there for this, employed in this kind of task, it's going to be a little bit difficult to manage. But, uh, but, you know, if we could, if we could have maybe one camera placed in each, uh, city council district, because I've got one location that I know that I've got an ongoing problem with this kind of thing. Uh, but that, that would be seven of these cameras deployed. And, um, and, uh, that might be something manageable that the city could handle. I, you know, I just, I'm talking off the top of my head. I'm trying to approach it and make it, uh, manageable, a manageable task at the same time. But, uh, I certainly support the concept. And I got a, I got a place for the first camera.
Mr. President. Hey, this is Jim Barber again. The, um, the administration's in complete agreement about these dump sites and the issues with litter. So the camera systems deployed by either code enforcement or Public Works were found to be insufficient to really develop the evidence to the degree that we could accommodate what you were requesting. In other words, they were still photograph-type technology. So getting with Jim DeLapp, we have shifted the enforcement over to the Mobile Police Department Intelligence Unit to use more sophisticated systems to accomplish exactly what, uh, Councilman Small is suggesting and everyone else is suggesting. And so those are, those, that equipment is in as of yesterday and is being deployed, uh, at certain locations in the city.
All right.
We, yeah, Mr., uh, uh, Chief Barber, can we send you a, um, suggestion on a location you might employ this technology?
Yes, sir, we'll be glad to take any of the, I mean, we received ours through Public Works where they're having to go pick them up quite frequently and clean off these areas. And so we started with that list, and so we do have to find locations that are, that are suitable for our equipment. But yeah, we'll be glad to take any suggestions on dump sites. And so we'll move that equipment around and try to accomplish the deterrence that I think all of y'all are looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, and Chief Barber, and again, and man, and I applaud the administration for going ahead and move on this act. But again, if it's no embarrassment behind it, you know, just like our president has stated, you know, you got, got busted, you know, et cetera. I mean, I know, you know, several people don't do different crimes because they scared about going to be placed on God bu- busted. But if these people are not publicized and embarrassed, it's, it's going to keep, you know, it's just going to keep happening. I mean, I can get a fifty-dollar ticket or a five-hundred-dollar ticket, but a five-hundred-dollar ticket ain't nothing to me compared to embarrassment across, you know, you know, this, my, my community, you know. It, it, I mean, my, you know, the embarrassment is, is, is way worse than five-hundred-dollar fine. So, I mean, in a kind of way that, you know, we can just make sure that these, you know, the people that are doing these crimes are just publicized and, and embarrassed, you know. And I think that would really take, you know, the fact to keep other people from, uh, doing the same thing and feeling more comfortable as far as in abandoning tires and, and et cetera and stuff. But again, I do appreciate the administration for taking that move. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, it, it is the reason for the sophisticated equipment isn't just for enforcement, but it's to accomplish exactly what, uh, Councilman Small is asking us to do. And so that publishing that type of criminal activity, we expect would be a deterrence to others because they will not know, to Councilman Joel Dave's point, we can't monitor every site, but there is no way for them to know which sites we are monitoring.
That sounds great, sounds great.
And Director Barber, it would be very interesting to see the walk of shame for somebody we caught dumping illegally on one of these vacant pieces of property, uh, who makes it a part of their routine to dump on these vacant pieces of property, to, to catch them in the act and then show them in a walk of shame, walking from the police department. I mean, there, there's got to be a way, like, um, Councilman Small said, to embarrass them and to have other people see that we mean business. You know, we're going to not just give you a ticket, possibly even arrest you for doing this kind of illegal dumping, just because you don't want to take it to the dump or you don't want to put it on your curb. So you take it to one of these neighborhoods where there are some vacant pieces of property, and you feel comfortable just dumping it there and, and leaving. I mean, we see it all too often. And again, I, I appreciate what you all are doing, and I've got some properties in mind, some neighborhoods in mind. So, uh, I look forward to, uh, talking with you more about that.
Mr. President, can I weigh in for just a moment?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, we've, as Director Barber said, we agree one hundred percent with what you're saying. Frustration extends, uh, you know, up into all of our offices also. One of the things that you know that we're, we're, uh, kind of, I would say, the victim of is that we've not had any of the public service workers, uh, coming out of the court system to pick up trash since the beginning of COVID. Uh, we talked to the municipal, um, judges, uh, last week and told them to please talk to their prosecutors and to everybody involved so that we can start trying to, you know, get, uh, the, the banned loads of people that you used to see on the street picking up trash. But we're, we're being negatively impacted by, by that. Uh, hopefully that will ramp up. Also, the grass cutting will start soon. And then all of our grass cutting contracts, you know, they are required to pick up the litter, uh, which will help also. One other thing, and I mentioned this two or three weeks ago, is that with what we're experiencing, uh, now this unfortunately is kind of rewarding bad behavior, and that is the bad behavior being throwing litter out and us going to pick it up. But, uh, Councilman Richardson, uh, whether it's a, a DBE contractor or any young or aggressive aspiring person that wants to start a business with three or four employees picking up litter. I mean, we have tried from the city's perspective to find people that are willing to create a small company, you know, to pick up litter. The State Highway Department, the ALDOT, cannot find people to pick up the litter on their estates because they were using the public service workers also. So if any of you know someone that will start a small company, you know, that, uh, our city may end up, I believe that there is a, uh, there's a opportunity or niche to do this. And I could see it going on just as do I, uh, performance contracts with the mowing companies. We reached out to all the mowing companies and asked them if they would, you know, just do litter in the off-season when they're not cutting grass, and we had no takers. So anything you can do to help us with that would be greatly appreciated.
All right, that's good news.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, yeah, um, good morning, Mr. Mayor. And, um, you know, that sounds, you know, very great, you know, what you just stated and everything. But, um, again, you know, like Ms. Gregory has stated earlier, we have several businesses that's out there that have trash in their parking lot. And, you know, and the only thing that takes is for the city to go by and ticket them. We have tools that's in the books, you know, that it can usually allow them to go and ticket that, you know, particular business. And if those businesses start getting tickets, we would not see as much trash in, in these parking lots and on, or different businesses, you know, like we see today. Um, and again, if they're not punished, it's just going to keep happening over and over and over. And when the community see trash in businesses' parking lot, is, I mean, it just, it's almost just like a trail. They're going, it's going to lead from that business and going down the street to the next business, to the next house, and, and et cetera. But again, we need to start using what we have on the books already and get the inspectors out. And this is suggesting this, I am demanding it. But again, you know, inspectors out and ticket these, you know, businesses or these property owners that currently they have trash. If one particular store, which I have in mind, top of my head right now, if they get through tickets, I know for a fact they're going to replace that general manager of that store and put a manager there that would at least put an employee out there every morning and pick up trash. Uh, this particular business that's in my mind right now, I cannot tell you the last time they were going to pick up trash out there. And even when the grass got cut a couple of weeks ago, I mean, the trash was still laying out there and pretty much is a detention, detention pond out there too, where trash is just in it. And again, we have to get.
So if you'll, if you'll send us, Councilor, I'd like to cut you off. I hear you loud and clear. If you will text that address and the name of the business to Jamie, then I will follow through. And the same would go for anybody else that has a business they want us to follow up on.
We, we'll do, thank you.
Matt, Matt, we see the clip?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we're at the end of the agenda, aren't we?
Yes, sir, we are.
I'll just double-check it. Uh, colleagues, there may be some further modification on this, uh, Tony Pope issue.